Okay, everybody stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all dignity and justice for all. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the villages suffering will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November 30th, 2023 at 7:30 PM or as soon thereafter as possible at the Suffolk Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, New York 10901, on an appeal by Michael Klein of 670 Myrtle Avenue, 195 Brooklyn, New York, 11205, to permit the construction, maintenance, and use of an enlarged driveway at 8 Yorkshire Drive, Suffolk, New York. The approval of such an appeal requires a variance from the requirements of Section 266-608-2. The premises affected are situated on the north side of Yorkshire Drive and on the west side of Cragmere Road. The property is listed on the Village of Suffolk town of Ramapho tax maps at Section 52.72, Block 1, Lot Number 1.
You want us now?
Yeah, I'm good. You can stay down there.
Screen time.
Oh, great, thank you. This is just the asking of the posting.
Ready?
Getting ready.
Yes, thank you. It's James Locata, 55 Old Turnpike Road, Suite 606, Nannuett, New York, 10954, the attorney for the applicant. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're here. This is the first time I've ever seen this. I didn't know that most codes don't have it. I checked a few codes and they don't have it. But there is a provision in your code when if you're going to enlarge the driveway, you need a variance. So that's why we're here. The applicant has purchased this property, it's rented out, and what we're trying to... What has happened in the past was the... In order to get out of the driveway, people had to go on the grass. And that was not acceptable because they were ruining the grass. So he expanded it two feet on each side of the existing driveway. And we're here now to request a variance for that extension. Your application talks about the five items that are contained in the statute regarding the balancing test. I've answered those questions. I'm prepared to go over them individually if you'd like. There's going to be no change in the neighborhood here. There's no other way for us to do this. And I'm ready to answer any questions for you. If you want me to make a formal presentation and go through the five items, I can do that for you.
Yep, and just to be clear in this little discrepancy here, it's not just to enlarge the driveway. It's because the driveway is 10 feet and anything more than 10 feet is not compliant. So you're asking for 14 feet.
Yes, correct.
Two feet on each side.
Right.
Is it done already?
Yes.
The work's done?
It would... I have a picture here if you'd like to see it if you could pass it.
Yeah.
I believe this was taken either this morning or last yesterday morning.
Just see, see if you can.
Unfortunately, the homeowner did not know that it was a 10-foot limit on the driveway. I don't know anybody else that has a 10-foot limit. I know... I live in Wesley Hills that doesn't have a 10-foot limit.
Want to open the public hearing?
You'll take a motion to open the public portion.
Want to open the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Your name?
Oh, thank you, good evening.
Raise your right hand like you're telling the whole truth, nothing but the truth, tell all you got.
I do. Good evening, my name is Lizanne Fiorentino. I live at 15 Yorkshire Drive, so I'm right across and down the street from number eight. And I do have an issue with this. I have here a picture of my house, which is very similar, same driveway. In this picture, there's three SUVs and a full-size Jeep parked. I could easily park another three to four cars out here and two in my garage. Number eight also has a two-car garage and had prior to the, against code, additional four feet on each side, two feet on each side that was added, could accommodate the same number of cars. And it's just further irritating that the work was already done without the permit. But that's, you know, it's easier to ask forgiveness than permission, we know that. So again, as a resident on the street, as a homeowner who lives in my home and can park 10 cars without an issue, I do have an objection to this request for a variance. It's just simply not needed for a single-family home on a single-family home street. And quite frankly, if the homeowner wants to put money into the property, fix the broken front door, fix the broken mailbox, paint the peeling tiles, there's a lot that could be done. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? You close the public hearing? Oh, sorry.
My name is John Haberman. I live on 4 Yorkshire Drive, two houses away from the house that's in question. I've been living there since 1971. I've known the previous owner, the Donahues. They had two sons, they were driving, they had no problems with this driveway. And I see no reason why it should be extended. I also resent that Mr. Klein, is it? Mr. Klein? Yes? Yes. That Mr. Klein made the changes without permission to do so. And now that he committed the crime, he wants to ask for forgiveness. I object to the whole thing. It's a one-family home, and I think that he's renting it to more than one family. So therefore I object. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anybody else? Close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, close the public portion.
Close the public portion.
Motion.
Motion. Motion, Terry, that one? Okay, second.
All favor.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we kind of want to speak.
Does anybody have questions?
Anybody here want to speak, have any questions?
I will, I'll ask. So I'm looking at the picture that we were given in the beginning. And I'm looking at the survey.
Yes.
So my initial question is, instead of doing what they did, why didn't they extend the back and make two spaces up here where you would pull up and you would be clear of the cars in the garage so that you could go in and out?
I can't answer that. All I know is that the... His problem was that the people were driving on the grass.
Okay.
That was his problem. I don't know this person's house and I don't know this gentleman's house. But the bottom line is, we had a problem there with people driving on the grass. And it became an issue and it made the property look...
Okay, but aesthetically, the correct solution would have been to extend the driveway 20 feet by 20 feet, basically, and create a two-car parking space at the end and leave the neck of the driveway in the correct configuration. As she said, we live in Suffolk, we have a narrow driveway. And when our kids were living home, we took turns moving each other's cars and making it work, but...
But how would you get a car? If a car is parked here and your son is parked here, how would that person get out without driving on the grass?
Do you have a copy of the survey?
Sure.
If you went off the end of the driveway, up 20 feet in a 20-foot square, which is at least is two parking spaces?
No, 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 I'm talking about the driveway as it existed.
Well, I can understand that.
I'm not talking about making it bigger. I'm saying is, here is the... Here is the car, and this is the son's car. How does the son, at 6 o'clock in the morning, go to work around without driving on the grass?
You take your mom's keys and you move the car. That's how we all made it work.
Yes.
That's how we all made it work.
I understand.
Or you pulled in at the right time so you were in the right spot.
You're talking about adding a tremendous amount of blacktop and impervious surface when...
The length of the driveway that they expanded by two feet on each side would have been almost an equal amount of impervious surface, and it would have been aesthetically correct.
You're talking about going into someone's backyard then?
His own.
You're saying, you're saying go 20 feet from the top of the driveway into the backyard?
Right, you make a flag.
But that would remove a large portion of grass. Why would you want to do that?
Because it would be within the code.
And also, there's a walkway there. You'd have to give... There's a slate walkway there, it would have to be moved.
You would get past that. That's just my question. I mean, I don't...
No, I think it's what we call in law "waste." I think that's what it is.
You call it what?
Waste. Meaning that we've solved our problem with the minimum amount of impervious surface required. If you move this up 20 feet, you're talking a tremendous amount... Are you saying... Let me just draw this in here. Are you saying that you want us to make this entire...
You need to stay back there.
Just turn it around, I'll be able to see from here.
We can't hear you if you're not at the mic.
Yeah, but you're going bigger than what I would say. Let me see your pen. It would go like this. If this is 10 feet, so you could go here and create two parking spaces. And they would be clear of the driveway of the garage. You'd be able to back out, they'd be able to back out, and nobody would be here. Nobody would be parking in the right of way.
But traditional parking spaces are 20 feet wide.
Well, they're 10 by 20 is a...
Right, so that would mean you'd be putting in impervious surface, so...
400 square feet.
Yeah, that's a lot of... That's a lot of non-grass. That's where the kids play, in the backyard. I mean, why would you take away a large portion of their backyard?
I'm just giving you an alternative that would have been more acceptable to the neighborhood. And it would not have... I doubt it would have required a variance because he's got very large lot area and that increased impervious surface would most likely not have put him over the max.
Yeah, I understand. I just don't... I just don't think taking away someone's backyard is better than having a two-foot extension on each side of the existing driveway. I mean, he has a tremendously large lot here. I mean, putting two feet on each side does not affect the character of the neighborhood in any way. It does not. It does not affect the neighbors in any way. It doesn't affect the value of their property. It doesn't affect what it looks like. It's all macadam, it all looks the same.
But what... Why don't you go through the factors? And you said you were going to go through the... You could go through the factors. I think that's really what you should be talking about.
Sure.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Before the change was made, was anyone complaining about what was happening to the property of the issues of unsightlyness?
The property owner was complaining to the tenant, telling him that you're making a mess of it, you're making a mess. When it was wet, it really caused a problem. And then there was another problem that they had, and that was... And the building inspector, if he was here, could talk about this because he made a complaint to the owner. When it was raining or was wet, the cars, when they went on the grass, would pull dirt onto the road. And the building inspector really had a problem with that.
So do you know how many people live in the house?
How many people live in the house?
Yes.
Four adults and two children. And they're all related.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, without being sounding wise, but...
No.
The going on the grass is not necessary if the last person just moved the car, right? Like, you're asking for a variance, but is it really necessary? Like, can't they just say, look, whoever's last has to move their car? Or whoever has to leave has to move that car?
Even if that's 6:00 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning, somebody's going to work?
You know, I do it every day. We all do it every day. So do you want to go through the criteria?
Sure. I'm trying to find it, though.
Well...
What page is it on?
Uh, well, it's not on there. But generally speaking, it's whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance is one.
There is none.
Whether the...
I gotta answer them one at a time because I'm not going to remember all five.
Okay.
There is none to the neighbors. There is none.
Okay. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method which will be feasible for the applicant to pursue but would not require a variance?
I would say I'm going to disagree with the old lady that the answer's no because to take 400 feet of grass out of someone's backyard when they have children living there, I think is unreasonable and unnecessary.
And whether the requested area variance is substantial?
I don't believe it could ever be... How this could ever be classified as substantial? We're talking about two feet on the side of a driveway, on each side.
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
I would say no. I showed you a picture that was taken this morning and, I mean, but for the fact that you know why we're here, if I showed you that, a regular person, that picture, I don't think they would be offended by the extension.
And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
You know, it has to do with the rain and it has to do with the driveway and it has to do with, you know...
That's a good shot.
It's not self-created. What's that?
Shannon, come on.
What?
It's self-created. That one you can admit to. It doesn't mean...
That doesn't mean it's... Because they can move the cars. It's 10 feet.
I think it's unreasonable if somebody goes to work at 4:00 in the morning to ask them to get up and move their car. I just, you know, I don't see the issue with that. I mean...
Again, I'm not trying to be difficult, but like, we planned that the night before. Like, if it's going to be 4:00 in the morning, the guy who's leaving at 4:00 in the morning is the last one in. And they go, and we don't need a variance.
That's true, except if somebody comes home late at night after everybody's sleeping. Right? I mean, you know, I'm just giving you...
No, I get it, I'm just, you know... You can concede the last one and it can still get granted, but you don't have to.
Is the picture that we've seen that was sent, is it different from the picture that was just produced?
Yeah. The one that I produced was taken this morning or yesterday morning?
So what it looks like now?
Okay, so it's been all pages and what it looked like before?
No.
No?
No. Yeah. No, that's got the addition.
No, it's got to be after.
Oh, okay. This one's got the addition, yeah.
It's got to be after.
It's all after because everything came up.
Yeah, it's got to be after. We wouldn't have had a picture...
Yeah, I see it now, yeah.
Questions?
Anybody else got any questions?
I don't know if it's a question, Mr. Locata. I just want to ask something. You said before, we're not here to talk about expanding the driveway except the driveway is expanded. You said, "We're not here to talk about taking away grass," but you've taken away grass. You're a client, not you specifically.
Yes. Thank you for not accusing me of...
No, I don't think you had a shovel out there. I don't...
No, my shovel days are done.
But you seem to undermine your own case by admitting that what has happened is what you're saying is not going to happen.
What do you mean?
You're saying, "We're not talking about adding more blacktop," but you've added more blacktop.
It's... That was the only way to expand the driveway. I mean, I think it's a legitimate... I... Listen, he didn't put an addition on the back. He didn't add bedrooms. He didn't convert the garage illegally. I don't think this could be considered, you know, if you're talking about a blatant violation. I don't think this falls into that category. I mean, everybody knows if you build an addition, you need a variance. Everybody knows if you convert the garage, you need a variance. But I'm going to be honest with you. I don't think 10% of the people would know that you need a variance to expand a driveway because you don't need one where I live in Wesley Hills. And I know you don't need one in most of the other villages. I know you don't need it in Spring Valley either. I do a lot of work there. So I'm just saying is, did he make a mistake? Yes. Should he have gone to the building inspector and said, "I want to do this, can I do it?" And then obviously, they would have told him, "No." And then he would have come here to this board and, you know... But I don't think he created a violation that is self-evident. You know what I'm saying? I mean, he didn't build in a big addition in the back. He didn't build a swimming pool.
But that's a matter of semantics.
That's exactly what you people do every day, semantics. That's your job. Your job is to determine if the violation was so egregious that it would stop you from granting our variance. And I don't think it could ever be considered egregious. I mean, I don't, you know... Thank you. Can I see you here?
No, the public portion's closed. If you want to open again, if you want to open again, you can open it.
You want to open up the public hearing again?
Sure.
Portion.
Okay, motion. Okay, come on up.
Motion.
Motion, second. This guy swears to tell the whole truth.
I don't know, did you swear to admit that?
No.
Yeah, that's right.
You want to raise your right hand? Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, tell all you got?
Definitely, yes. I think there's a greater issue at hand here. I don't think that four feet of driveway allows another car to pass if there's a car already parked in the way. I think the issue is that there are too many people living in this house and there are too many cars. And I think it's time for us to stand up to the fact that there are people who buy homes and they rent them out to multifamilies. And I don't believe that's allowed. But it's going on all over the village. And I really object to that. Thank you for listening to me.
How many cars have you seen there at one time?
I don't really check it out too often. Oh, much more than two. I just passed by before coming here, and I believe there were four cars in the driveway.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
In his lottery, he missed a five, but I don't find that... That was a question. He has three kids that drive.
Maybe the village has a problem, but it's not at this house because the building inspector has been there many times. And there is no violation there, and it's not overcrowded. He has five bedrooms there. So it's not like we're not doing stuff that people do in other communities. It's just not happening here, and it's unfair for him to characterize this house as having a violation for overcrowding because it's not happening. The building inspector has been there many times. He's been there about the dirt in the road, been there about the driveway, he's been there for the fire inspection. So it's not an issue.
Close the public portion again?
You close the public... Oh. So move, one more. Come on up.
Do we need to re-swear?
You're sworn in.
I'm already sworn. I would posit that, based on what Mr. Locata is saying, that there's no overcrowding in this situation with four adults. I'm guessing at max, you could only have four cars. So with a driveway that size and a two-car garage, you don't need more space. If what he's saying is accurate, four adults, two children, at max, you've got four cars. So there doesn't really appear to be a need. And I drive past every day. I have seen as many as four. On my way here tonight, there were two. But again, a lot of us have four cars. And we get in and get out, leave your keys at the door so whoever can go move your car, or we make arrangements. But again, to your point, if there's no overcrowding, they don't need a bigger driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody?
Any other questions?
Anybody got any other questions?
Not me.
Anybody want to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for the variance.
My second.
Vote to approve.
Well, why don't we do a roll call on the motion? There's a first and a second. You want to do a roll call on the motion?
Sure.
Melissa, you want to do that or...
Bruce?
Is it to...
To...
To join in Bruce's motion to deny? So a yes vote would be to deny.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you doing a roll call?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, we're doing disapproval.
No, it's a roll call. You have to call out the names, so...
I say no.
You have to call out each... No, no, Melissa will call out each name and then you'll give the...
Bruce, do you deny?
No. Yes, I deny.
Lisa? I deny.
Yes, so you're yes on the motion?
Barry?
Do I deny? No.
Say his name. Ready?
Yes, Carrie?
Yes, I deny.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Andrew.
Andrew. Andrew?
Uh, no, I do not deny.
So the vote is three to two to deny. Right? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Can you say that?
Three to two, no to deny.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
It's not a public hearing, it's just... It's not a public hearing, it's just an interpretation.
We have on a second on our agenda Wayne Project LLC, 15616 Wayne Avenue, Z202305, interpretation application.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Daniel Richmond. I'm a partner with the law firm Zarin &amp; Steymetz. And with me here this evening is Peter Gado Jr. of Peter Gado &amp; Associates, the applicant's planning professional. Together with Mr. Gado, our firm represents 15616 Wayne Avenue LLC, the owner of 15616 Wayne Avenue in connection with its appeal of a determination by the village building inspector dated October 18th, 2023.
Hold on, hold on one second, Dan. Maybe you want to close it? Would you mind closing it for her? Thanks.
Do you want me to start from the beginning, Ron?
I don't think so, no.
What's that?
I don't think it's necessary, no.
You got it?
You might want to get that one too, Peter. You might want to get that one too, Peter.
What's that? Thank you.
Yeah, I get that one, right? Might as well. Now we stop talking. Sorry, go ahead.
Start from the beginning or?
No, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
The subject property is located in the village's multifamily residence MR-15 zoning district where low-rise multiple dwellings are permitted use as of right. The applicant proposes to develop a zoning compliant, two-and-a-half-story, 41-unit multifamily building with associated parking and amenities. All 41 of the proposed units would be studio apartments. As I will explain, the project has fewer impacts and includes more amenities than the project reviewed by the village board at the time it rezoned the property to the MR-15. Moreover, the project advances the village's goals and objectives. The applicant submitted a site plan application to the village planning board for its zoning compliant project. On October 18th, 2023, however, the date of the applicant's second appearance before the planning board, the applicant received a memorandum from the village building inspector stating in relevant part that, quote, "The proposal is impermissible," unquote, apparently based on a condition that is not in the village zoning law, but instead based on statements in the village board minutes at the time the property was rezoned. The applicant respectfully appeals from the building inspector's determination and respectfully requests an interpretation of the village's zoning law in response to the building inspector determination pursuant to suffer in village zoning law section 26654 and New York State Village Law section 7-712B. Particularly, the applicant appeals that determination to your board for relief, including an interpretation that the purported conditions that are in the village board minutes are not in the village zoning law and are hence unenforceable, and that the project is permitted on the property as of right. By way of background, in 2011, the applicant's predecessor and interest obtained a rezoning of the property to the MR-15 zoning district. The prior owner was apparently processing an application at that time for a multifamily building comprised of 21 three-bedroom units. As reflected in the village board's minutes of its January 3rd, 2011 meeting, the village board approved a zoning change to rezone the property to the MR-15. The building inspector determination incorrectly relies on statements in the village board minutes to the effect that the rezoning was subject to, quote, "number of units not to exceed 24," and the site plan to be in substantial conformity to the conceptual plan presented to the village board, unquote. The building inspector determination that the project is not permitted because it violates purported conditions that are not in the village zoning law is an error and respectfully must be vacated. The purported conditions invoked by the building inspector in its determination do not appear in the village code and are not in the text of the subject local law effectuating the rezoning. In fact, the text of the local law, including the version filed with the New York State Department of State, does not include any conditions related to the rezoning of the property. In the first instance, the building inspector determination should be overturned because the plain language of the village code establishes that the applicant's project complies with the plain language of the village zoning law. It is axiomatic, as the courts have repeatedly held, that as a general rule, unambiguous language of a statute is a lone determinative. As the Second Department, the appellate division in this area, held in Deutsche Bank National Trust Company versus Leventhal, quote, "The statutory text is the clearest indicator of legislative intent, and courts should construe unambiguous language to give effect to its plain meaning." Moreover, as a court further held, in construing statute is a well-established rule that resort must be had to the natural signification of the words employed, and if they have a definite meaning which involves no absurdity or contradiction, there is no room for construction and courts have no right to add or take away from the meaning. As such, as the Second Department held in Enray Witkowicz versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Yorktown, a zoning code must be construed according to the words used in their ordinary meaning. Here, there is nothing in the plain language of the village zoning law as codified that would contradict the fact that the project is zoning compliant. Because the language of the village code is clear, the village inspector's reference to village board minutes is improper and inappropriate. As the Second Department held in Enray Daniel C., and as the New York Court of Appeals has affirmed, a statute must be construed according to the ordinary meaning of its words, and resort to extrinsic matter such as legislative history is inappropriate when the statutory language is unambiguous and the meaning unequivocal. Because the village code unequivocally establishes that the project is zoning compliant, the building inspector's reference to the village board minutes is improper. Moreover, even if the building inspector's invocation of the village board minutes created any ambiguity related to the purported conditions for rezoning, such ambiguity as a matter of law would have to be resolved in the applicant's favor. As the New York Court of Appeals has repeatedly held, such as in Toys R Us versus Silva, zoning restrictions being in derogation of common law property should be strictly construed in any ambiguity resolved in favor of the property owner. Similarly, the Court of Appeals held in Allen v. Adami that, quote, "Since zoning regulations are in derogation of the common law, they must be strictly construed against the municipality which has enacted and seeks to enforce them. Any ambiguity in the language used in such regulations must be resolved in favor of the property owner." Here again, the reference to the village board minutes is improper because the plain language of the village zoning law is clear. In any event, at most, the village board minutes which contradict the plain language of the village zoning law create an ambiguity which as a matter of law must be construed in the applicant's favor. Finally, the building inspector's determination unconstitutionally violates the applicant's due process rights. As the Second Department held in West Hampton Beach Associates versus Village of West Hampton Beach, due process requires that a statute be sufficiently definite so that individuals of ordinary intelligence are not forced to guess at the meaning of statutory terms. As the United States Court of Appeals for the Second Circuit, the federal court with jurisdiction in this area held in Cuny versus Board of Trustees of the Village of Grandview, quote, "Among the most fundamental protections of due process is a principle that no one may be required at peril of life, liberty, or property to speculate as to the meaning of statutes. All are entitled to be informed of what the state commands or forbids." As the Second Circuit recognized in Cuny, United States Supreme Court precedent recognizes two independent grounds upon which a statute's language may be so vague as to deny due process. First, quote, "A law violates due process if it fails to provide people of ordinary intelligence a reasonable opportunity to understand what conduct it prohibits." As the Second Circuit held, quote, "Animating this first vagueness, Brown, is a constitutional principle that individuals should receive fair notice or warning when the state has prohibited specific behavior or acts." Second, as the Second Circuit noted, quote, "A law is unconstitutionally vague if it authorizes or even encourages arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement. Statutes must provide explicit standards for those who apply them to avoid resolution on an ad hoc and subjective basis with the intended dangers of arbitrary and discriminatory application." Here, respectfully, the building inspector's determination violates both judicially recognized bases for holding that a statute is so vague as to deny constitutionally mandated due process, including that first, the building inspector's determination would cause the village zoning code to fail to provide people of ordinary intelligence a reasonable opportunity to understand what conduct it prohibits. The purported conditions invoked by the building inspector, again, do not appear in the village code and are not in the text of the subject local law effectuating the rezoning, including the version filed with the New York State Department of State. Second, as the building inspector's determination lays bare, it's unconstitutionally authorizes and even encourages arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement. Finally, your board should note that the applicant's project actually poses fewer impacts than the plan cited in the building inspector determination. The project has a third less bedrooms than the plan cited in the building inspector determination, 41 studio apartments as compared to 63 bedrooms in the previously approved project, and is approximately three foot shorter. And moreover, unlike that plan, the project contains additional amenities including a bus stop gazebo and a dog park. It is also worth noting that the applicant's project advances the village's goals and objectives. The property is surrounded by other residential properties, including the Berkeley Square Apartments, which is multifamily to the immediate south, and the applicant submits that the two-and-a-half-story multifamily residential building with onsite parking that it is proposing is wholly consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. While the village does not have a comprehensive plan that the applicant is able to locate, the applicant submits that its project would be in furtherance of several basic land use and planning objectives applicable to any community. First, the project would be a significant investment that would contribute to revitalization of the village's downtown, which was identified as a goal at the village's board's comprehensive plan kickoff meeting. The project would provide much-needed, more affordable housing type within the village due to its unit types, and would potentially bring in new residents, which could generate additional revenue for local businesses. Expanding housing opportunities, promoting high-quality residential communities with a range of appropriate densities, and providing sufficient housing stock for potentially lower-income groups such as young adults, caregiver workforce, and emergency service workers is also a goal of the Rockland County Comprehensive Plan. Indeed, the Rockland County Comprehensive Plan states that more diverse housing development is demanded by the expansion in youthful and elderly population. Through the project, the applicant would be providing studio apartments, again, which are more affordable than the one-to-two-bedroom or three-bedroom units previously approved. Thus, the project would help ensure that the housing needs of different potential tenants at different income levels are met. Finally, at 5:54 PM this evening, we did receive a letter from Terry Rice weighing in. I've had a brief opportunity to review it and review the case law, and I would point out that it's flawed in multiple respects, the primary one being that it's really a red herring. Nowhere in his letter does he talk about the rules of statutory interpretation that are discussed in detail in our submission to your board. Again, the issue is whether the purported condition is in the zoning code. Again, even instead, he goes into a lengthy discussion of uniformity requirement, but even in this argument, which again is a red herring and off point of what the issue before your board, is contradictory and flawed. For example, he argues that conditions regarding individual property cannot be in a local zoning law, although, again, later in his letter, he legally argues that that's exactly what can be done. First, the contents of this letter where he asserts that the authorization to attach conditions can't be made, but again, as he points out in his letter, he cites a case that specifically says that the town does have the power to impose conditions, but again, it does not anywhere in his letter discuss that these conditions have to be in somewhere that someone acquiring the property would be able to locate them. If the conditions were going to be imposed, they should be set forth where someone with reasonably due diligence could find them. Finally, and ultimately, I think with the crux of the, or again, his arguments, I think, off tangent, off point, but he kind of, I think, shoots himself in the foot at the end when he cites a case that he says particularly apt here, Youngworth versus Tannan Ramapo, in which the Second Department says that the town power to zone does not include the power to create a zoning ordinance that specifies the exact number and types of dwelling units allowed. So again, I mean, respectfully, I've known Terry for years, he's a great lawyer, but I think in this letter, he's off point. For these reasons and for the reasons set forth in our November 14 submission to your board, we respectfully request that your board overturn, vacate, and nullify the building inspector determination, an issue and interpretation that there are no valid conditions with respect to the property other than the applicable bulk requirements set forth in the village's zoning law, and that the project is zoning compliant and permitted on the property. Thank you.
Members of the board...
We're both here to answer any questions your board may have.
Members of the... Before we go any farther...
Sure.
I need to recuse myself from this matter. I have a prior relationship with the property. I think for all concerned parties, it would be better if I stepped down for this vote.
Bruce, just to be clear, I think you were a member of the village board...
I was a member of the village board. I was the deciding vote in changing the zone.
Thank you.
So I think it behooves everyone if I withdraw from this.
So if you're withdrawing, we can get up and get out?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so with that before, is that all you have for your presentation for now?
Yeah, we're, again, we're happy to answer any questions your board may have, and Peter's here if you have any questions about the plan. We can show you a rendering if you want to show them a rendering of what the project looks like.
Sure. And Peter's not an attorney, correct?
Peter's not an attorney. Peter is the planner.
So we'll just ask him that.
You would need to be sworn in.
Swear.
What's that?
Want to raise your right hand? Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay.
I'm Peter Gado, Peter Gado &amp; Associates, I'm an architect. Just a couple of points, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to see the plans or not, but two specific things. One, just to pick up on what Dan was saying, one paragraph in Mr. Rice's letter said that we did not take into account the steep slope law, which is completely false. The steep slope recognition, which is false, as evidenced in A100, I have a slope reduction chart right there that shows how it's reflected, so that's not true in his letter. And then the second thing I just want to point out is that the building itself, it's compact in nature in that... Microphone? It's compact in nature, so we're leaving a front yard setback, and then the building is composed in one area, lots of green space, and leaving the entire backyard not affected. And purposely, it's an interesting blend of the street, that there's some multifamilies to the south, there's another multifamily complex next to that, and some single-family houses which are aware of, and some larger houses heading north. And to that effect, the architecture in this compact space, rather than spread out all over the place, we try to make the front of the building, which is this, look like a house that would be, as you're driving down the street, rather than resemble the multifamilies that are south of us, we purposely designed the front of the building to match and to replicate sort of the street architecture and character of the street driving north, which are houses and houses and houses. So as you drive by north or south, you would see basically this view as a front axial view to kind of guide your thinking in scale and character with the street itself. And then deep into the property, one is heavily screened on one side for the multifamily, screened on all sides actually with trees. We broke up the volume in different massing and traditional gable roofs and had some regular architectural familiar elements that would blend in with the buildings, both the houses across the street and the apartments not adjacent to the south. So the floor plans are fairly straightforward. The ground floor, it's a central entrance to the building, studios on the ground floor, amenity spaces in the basement, which is actually a little bit above the ground, so some clear-story windows for light and air ventilation. Sorry. So the ground floor are below ground in the cellar, but they would have clear-story windows, so light and air would access all the spaces inside. And then only a second floor accessed, which is essentially this top floor here, and different studios here. So the smaller studios have balconies, and the other studios have larger windows. And that's the simple building we have.
So just for the board, you know, what Mr. Gado was pointing out really is not necessarily germane for the purposes of why you're here tonight, it's helpful to know, I guess, but as Mr. Richmond points out, the building inspector has made a determination here. Mr. Richmond's client disagrees with that interpretation, and you, as the appellate board, if you will, of the village, makes a determination. Either you review this and say, "I agree with what the building inspector said," or you say, "Well, I agree with what Mr. Richmond's saying, and I think the building inspector was incorrect in his interpretation of the code." Would you agree with what I'm saying, Mr. Richmond, in terms of the purpose here?
Yes, as their authority, yes, as to, you know...
Right. So with that said, those are kind of the ground rules of where we are. Mr. Richmond, most of what he said, I believe, is contained in his letter to the board dated November 14. For obvious reasons, just receiving it, it didn't get too much into Mr. Rice's letter that was just received November 30th. I'm not sure how long the board has, which is today, 2023. I'm not sure how long the board's had a chance to review it. I'm sorry, how... I'm sorry, how long the board has had a chance to review it. But with that said, I'm just going to ask a few questions myself, and then turn it over to the board, and the board can, you know, if the board has questions or questions of me, we can handle that as we go. But I guess what I would ask Mr. Richmond, just, you know, you're obviously making a big, I'm sorry, a legal argument. The motion, I'm sorry, the, when the local law was approved, that was 2011, correct? 2011?
Yes.
Okay, so you were talking about the minutes of the meeting that night. Would you agree that it was part of a motion where they mentioned that the motion to approve the zone change was subject to certain conditions?
I'm not sure I would agree with that, Rob. Again, you know, I think the dispositive point for this board is what's in the village code. That's what this board is authorized to review and administer. Again, what I think you're referring to is essentially what we would call, as lawyers, legislative history, and as the case law that I've cited and as ample case law establishes, you do not look at legislative history where the plain language of a statute is unambiguous and says what is required here. The village zoning law unambiguously says what the bulk requirements and other parameters are for building in the MR-15 without reference to any condition. There is no way our client, when it bought this property, with reasonable due diligence, would have been able to ascertain this purported condition.
Well, let me ask you this.
Rob, I'm still finished. I think it's unfair to rely on essentially what's institutional knowledge. I appreciate that Terry Rice was there at the time of the approval, and for him to, you know, assert that that's, you know, what should be, again, that's, I think, you know, violates multiple precepts of statutory interpretation, as well as our client's due process rights.
Okay, so you're mentioning your client's due diligence. The property is currently vacant, correct? There's nothing on the property?
No.
Yeah, okay. It's just vacant land, I should say, when I say vacant. Vacant land, there's no buildings, no development.
Correct.
Right. And I don't know what Mr., and I, if you're going to speak, Mr. Gato, I would just ask you to stand over so we can hear. And I'm asking Mr. Richmond these questions, but you can answer. Is Mr. Gato a part of the LLC that purchased the property, or you're the engineer or?
He's the planning consultant.
Planning consultant, okay. So you're not a member of the LLC? He's not a member of the LLC?
I'm not.
Okay. So I guess the question would be, as part of the due diligence, your client purchased from the developer who actually obtained the zone change, right?
I'm not sure of that.
Okay. So you don't know if there was a subsequent purchaser in between?
I don't know, honestly, Rob. But I don't think that's relevant, because again, the question.
Well, no, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. You are the one who mentioned as part of reasonable due diligence.
Yes.
So if he purchased from the person who obtained the zone change, isn't that something that would come up as part of the negotiations? I'd be interested to see the contract of sale. Maybe in the contract of sale, he purchased the plans. That might be, that's certainly relevant as to his due diligence.
I mean, look, Rob, that might be, you know, if our client brought like, you know, a federal civil rights action, we might get into discovery in that respect. But again, the question before this board is fairly narrow. The question before this board is what is the village zoning law says? And I think it's really a simple, straightforward answer, is what, you know, the village zoning laws for the MR-15 sets forth bulk requirements and nothing else. Nothing in the Secretary of State says anything about that. So for, I think, you know, again, we can go on all kinds of inquiries and hypotheticals of what they should or shouldn't have done when they bought the property.
You went into the inquiry by saying with reasonable due diligence. I'm suggesting with reasonable due diligence, maybe in the contract, it's there. So if you want to make, let me finish, please, let me finish. You brought up reasonable due diligence. I'm suggesting to you that perhaps to make a full record here, showing the contract of sale, that there was no way that he could have known with reasonable due diligence, number one. Number two, let me ask you this, the, do you agree, and again, this is more to, so that the board can get a full flavor for it, that when a village board legislatively approves something, that it can set conditions? I mean, can it set conditions as part of the approval?
Well, so two things, Rob. First, reference to the contract, again, that's another red herring. That has nothing to do with the question before this board of what is the village code said. That's the only issue this board is authorized to interpret. This isn't a federal court adjudicating a civil rights claim. Again, this is a village zoning board of appeals that is authorized by the village code and state law to simply interpret whether or not the building inspector has correctly understood and interpreted the plain language of the village code. Now, your next question is, I'm sorry, your second question was?
You're asking the wrong guy. What did I, no kidding.
What was the second question?
The second question? Was about conditions, whether conditions?
Yeah, well, so, look, Rob, of course, they can attach conditions, and I think that's one of the several flaws in Terry's letter, is he says, you know, that he acknowledges you can attach conditions. But again, he cites law, and that the law is clear, that the town, again, I'm quoting from a case that's quoted in Terry's letter in a block quote, where it's in a case that he says is particularly apropos here, and that's quote, "A town's power to zone does not include the power to create a zoning ordinance that specifies the exact number and type of dwelling units allowed, but only allows a town to determine what may or may not be built." To that point, again, the second department, citing that case, relied on a case called BLF Associates, where, again, you know, I just got this letter at 5:40, so I haven't researched every case, but in that case, the village zoning ordinance, again, the ordinance itself set forth the condition so that someone would be on notice of it, which is the issue here, but going off-point, they, their ordinance said no more than 34 single-family homes, no more than 40 senior semi-attached dwellings, and a community recreational facility for a specific project. And the second department and BLF Associates LLC versus Towne and Hempstead, 5983, 51, said that there is nothing in this section of the town law which empowers a town to create a zoning ordinance that specifies the exact number and type of dwelling units allowed. Zoning ordinances may go no further than determining what may or may not be built.
Right.
They held that this provision excessively restricts and leads us to conclude that it was not exacted and enacted for legitimate zoning purposes. So again, I mean, even if we got that argument, and that's not the argument that should be before this board, I'll say it one more time. The only interpretation issue for this board is what does the village zoning code say?
Yes, now, you did not go the full length of what Mr. Rice put in his letter, where he indicated, as further that case said, the BLF Associates versus Towne and Hempstead. However, a change in zoning may be subject to reasonable conditions and restrictions related to and incidental to the use of the property.
Sure.
And designed to minimize any adverse impact on the surrounding area. That's number one.
Yes.
Number two, you know, you've mentioned a federal civil rights suit at least three times, maybe four. So if you're going to allege that what the building inspector did and what this board may do would violate civil rights, wouldn't you want the board to have the opportunity to see the full record, such as the contract, such as maybe testimony from your client saying, I didn't know? Did your client know? Maybe he did.
So first, to your point, again, yes, reasonable conditions can be imposed. So for example, the case that Mr. Rice cited in his letter says where they generally have like an affordable housing requirement. These are generalized conditions that can be imposed on a project, not you can only build this project. There's ample case law that you can't do that. And again, this isn't the point before this board. And to your second point about creating a full record, we presented the full record. The full record is your village zoning code. The zoning code, that's what this board is here for, to interpret the zoning code. Period.
All right.
So to go off to, you know, the contract, what our client did or didn't know, it's interesting, Rob, I think we could have fun with it, but.
So you can't represent right now whether your client knew or did not know about this condition? Are you willing to make a representation now that he did not know about the condition?
Based on everything I've had of my client, I think our client was very surprised when they first heard that someone was alleging this condition. This was not in their mind. Rob, as you may recall, when we first started processing this, we were producing, providing a larger project that was being advanced through the planning process. We were talking about stormwater, protecting timber rattlesnakes, the normal thing. And again, then out of left field came Terry Rice saying, oh, hey, I remember in 2011 there was this condition. So, you know, the best I can say, did I ever ask him, did you know about this? I didn't, never had that conversation with him. But again, Rob, it's off-point. The point is.
I, I can use.
Okay. So I'm not actually, we're talking about these other issues.
No, no, because we're allowed to develop a record here.
No, but that's not the record.
May I ask what the condition that Terry Rice uncovered?
Sorry?
What was the condition that Terry Rice uncovered?
Well, the condition, the.
The Terry Rice.
I'll read it verbatim. So when this, the zone change was approved, it was, I'm not sure exactly what the prior zone was, but, you know, legislatively, it comes before the village board, and then, much like here, they make a motion to approve or disapprove, what have you, the law. So what is stated in Terry's letter, the minutes, the following motion was made at the January 3, 2011, meeting of the Board of Trustees. A motion to approve the zone change, rezoning the property to MR-15, and adopting the local law, amending the zoning law on the official zoning map of the village of Sufferin, subject to Mr. Sawicki's comments, the letter of the Department of Environmental Conservation, subject to site plan approval, number of units not to exceed 24, that the site plan be in substantial conformity to the conceptual plan presented to the village board, that there be no blasting, that the applicant pay the cost of a traffic study to be performed by the village. So that's what the condition was, Terry was.
Alluding to.
Okay. That Terry was referring to. I'm sorry, I was asking a lot of questions. Do you, any board members have questions?
I have a question for Mr. Gato. We didn't get the second page that you showed with the slope calculations. So did you, what is the reduced area after the slope calculations?
So there's a whole chart, I can show this to the board if you wish. The total area with slope calculations is 132.
With slope?
With slope reductions.
Reductions?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
With slope reduction, with slope reductions.
Is what?
132, 177.
That's the gross area, isn't it?
Yeah, square feet, yep.
So what's, after the slope reductions, what's your net area?
I'm sorry, what?
After the slope reductions, what is your net area?
No, that is the total, 132, right? It's a gradation of chart, I'm not sure if you remember how it works, but it's the square feet of the site, and it's divided up in different percentages, and you get a total.
I understand how it works.
Okay, great.
I was referencing the original site plan that was submitted, and they did the slope reductions. I didn't have yours to compare to, I didn't know, you know, we were only given the one sheet. We don't have a bulk table, but anyhow.
I wasn't worried.
The original slope reductions took the net area down to 117 and change.
I don't know, I have the chart right in front of me, I'm reading what's here, I don't have the old one in front of me. I could submit this for next time.
All right, well, here, let me tell you where I was going with this question. So the net area was 117, 732, or something like that, and according to our bulk regulations, when you're going to use the bulk table, for the MR district, if you're using a studio apartment, which is considered no bedroom, my calculations show that you're only going to be allowed 35 units. So my question is, are you planning on coming back and asking for a zoning, a zone change, not a zone change?
Variance?
A variance, because you're asking for more units than you're going to be allowed.
Well, again, you don't have the benefit of having this in front of me, but I think the math works from our end, so I'm not really sure of the discrepancy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said?
I say, you don't have the benefit of having this in front of you right now, but I did all the math, and this is the calculation we came up with. So once I submit it, again, if it is a formal review of zoning interpretation, then we could talk. But according to, we tried to build this to what we were allowed to do, so that's the case.
Okay, I was just wondering if you were planning on coming back for, you know, another variance.
To be clear, our intention is to.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure. To be clear, our intention is to submit a zoning-compliant project.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, one has been submitted. I guess the question is, in your mind, the 41 is zoning-compliant?
That's our understanding, we haven't heard anything to that point different from.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, that's our belief, that's our belief, and we haven't, again, as to Peter's point, we haven't heard anything to the contrary from the building inspector.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions?
No.
All right.
I don't know. Can I make a, I basically didn't get a long time to read this through.
Yes, it was.
I did not get enough time to read this.
There's a plethora of information here that we're just seeing.
I really would like to go into executive session and discuss it with counsel.
Yes, I.
So you want to have a, you want, that, and you can do that, if you, the board takes a vote to, I mean, discussing, asking for legal advice with counsel doesn't necessarily call for executive session, but let's call it executive session in any event, if the board still sees fit.
Yes, I would.
We need a motion.
I would motion on that. Motion for an executive session.
Andrew?
Yes.
Second?
There.
Who's the second?
I'll go to second.
Carrie, all favor?
Aye.
All right. So we need a motion to come out of executive session.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second, Carrie, I want. All favor?
Aye.
Did you get that, Melissa?
Yes.
The motion, okay.
Wait a second.
Vote to come out of executive session.
Wait, what was it? Because Bruce isn't here, he shut off the camera?
He put it on, I think he just came in and put it on.
Yeah. All right, gentlemen, we had our session, and we had a lot to put together tonight, and we'd like more time to look at it, and we'd have to, we'd like to postpone continuance to the next, to a next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. When is your next meeting?
Can we do December 14, Melissa, does that work?
Yes, it works.
December 14.
December 14.
At 7 o'clock.
I think I have a conflict that night.
7:30.
Right? I mean, 7:30, everybody said?
Yeah.
Well, not everybody will.
Oh, I got my firm holiday party then, that's what it is.
Uh, well.
We could go to the 21st if you wanted to go back to the 21st. We got a conflict on the 21st.
We'll do January. The 18th.
Okay, you want to do January?
Yeah, he's got a conflict, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do the 18th.
What do you have, January?
January 18. Yeah, that's fine, January.
All right, 118, 24.
11?
Okay.
Okay.
To January 18, 24.
January?
Yeah.
18?
18. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year and all that. So we make the motion in the closing.
At the minutes of August 18.
Oh, yeah, right.
Can we get Bruce back?
We're done, yeah, yeah. You're not our record, you're their record.
Can I get Bruce back?
Joking.
We went.
Now, we're still on minutes. Joking. So we don't have anything. Do we have anything else? We decide when we get to.
Can I have any other submissions? Take them off the list?
No, not.
Motion to accept the minutes of August 18th.
Third.
August 3rd.
I'll make the motion. Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we move it?
Yes. Bruce, second. Motion to close.
Motion to close our meeting.
Barry, second by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
And next meeting is going to be when?
January?
Is it January 18th, Melissa? Do you have anything for December?
I have nothing yet, but.
Yeah, but it's already November 30th, this is late, so.
Actually, before we close, did we want to discuss putting, or did we put a deadline on, you know, a hard cap on when we would accept things and when we would hear them? You know, some of us have talked about it informally. The way the planning board did the, you know, anything within 30 days of submission, they wouldn't hear.
Well, I think we kind of have that anyway, right?
Well, unless it, if there is, if it has to go for a.
GML.
GML, then it's a 30 day, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't go on the agenda beforehand. So if something doesn't need a GML, it could have be on the agenda before the 30 days, like the driveway to.
It's up to you, I don't know if it's needed for this board, because often there's not anything on, right? I mean, but that's up to you guys, if you want to say, you know, it has to be in, you know, if you're having a public hearing, there's certain timeframes, but it's really up to the board what you want to do. You want to say it has to be in two weeks before? More of a policy.
I think that kind of policy does give all of us full notice, full chance to look over all the documentation, do site visits and all the kind of, sometimes things coming in.
You know, if you're not in by a certain date, they can get on this meeting and give up to the following.
I agree.
Do we need a formal motion, or is this an informal, just adopting of a rule?
I guess you could just.
I think you have to formal, enforce it.
Yeah, just adopt the resolution that in order to get on the agenda, has to be in two weeks before the meeting.
Two weeks before the scheduled meeting.
Motion.
Motion to do so.
Bye, Bruce, second by.
Second.
Barry, all in favor?
Aye.
Buddy, have a nice, thank you.
Wait, no, we need to.
Motion to, Jerry? Bye. You ready?
We had the motion, we didn't take the vote, because I threw out the, so all in favor?
Aye.